Hello, welcome to the Planning Commission. If you are planning to speak at tonight's meeting, please fill out a public speaker form. They are located at the front table by the chamber doors. Please bring that to me, and if you need any assistance, please stop by my desk. Thank you.
Planning Commission meeting to order. We welcome to the November 20th, 2025 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While Planning Commission, while the Planning Commission welcomes public improvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform or be considered by the Planning Commission and may cause the Chair to interrupt the speaker. Such comments will not be consented or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. Thank you. All right, I'd like to call on Commissioner Goldberg to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, may we have a roll call, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pellman.
Present.
Vice Chair Bush.
Here.
Chair Athanas.
Here.
Commissioner Babino.
Present.
Commissioner McGee.
Present.
Commissioner Palmer.
Present.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Okay, now is the time for public comments for any items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
We have no comments for anything that is not on the agenda.
Sweet. Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing on General Plan Amendment Number 20 hyphen 001 zoning text amendment 20 dash 002 tentative parcel map 21 dash 0103 conditional use permit 19021 and environmental assessment number 21001 Golden West and Garfield Commercial Project. All right, Planning Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item. I'll start on my right.
I spoke a little bit about it with Commissioner Bush.
I spoke to some degree with City Councilmember McKeon, and other than that, I know that there was a request to see if I had a conflict of interest, and I do not, and that was confirmed with council. Thank you.
I spoke with Dominic McGee and Councilman Chad Williams.
And I spoke with Mayor Protem McKeon.
I had a short conversation with Mayor Protem McKeon and also a meeting with Councilman Twining.
I had a conversation with Mayor Protem McKeon and with Councilman Don Kennedy, and I spoke, I don't know if it needs disclosure, I spoke to four anonymous residents.
Good. And very brief conversation with Mayor Protem McKeon as well.
Okay, may we please have a staff report?
Principal Planner Joanna Cortez will give the presentation.
All right, good evening, Chair Athanas and members of the Planning Commission. Let's see. The item before you is located at 19026 Golden West Street. It is located at the southeast corner of Golden West Street and Garfield Avenue. The general plan land use designation is I or industrial SP, specific plan overlay, and the zoning designation is SP9, specific plan number nine, commonly known as the Holly Seacliff specific plan. The project is surrounded by industrial uses to the north, south, and east, and commercial is located, and there's a commercial shopping center across Golden West Street, and catty corner to the site is residential. So there are multiple facets to this project, and I'll quickly go over each request. The first one is a request to amend the general plan designation from industrial to commercial neighborhood to allow the proposed commercial uses similar to the commercial center or to the commercial uses that are allowed across the street. The next portion of the request is a zoning text amendment to modify the zoning map within the specific plan to allow the uses here to go from industrial to commercial. You can see the existing map within the specific plan and the proposed one within the specific The next part of the request, in order to support the development, a tentative parcel map is requested to consolidate the eight lots and create a 1.32 net acre site comprised of two parcels for each parcel, one for the parcel for the fuel center and the other one for the car wash. And you can see right here, parcel one where the fuel center will be at, and parcel two for the car wash. And then, a conditional use permit is proposed for the actual development of the site to allow for the service station comprised of two canopies at approximately 19 feet in height with 14 pumps, a payment kiosk, a drive-through car wash at approximately 30 feet at its highest point, with six vacuum stalls on the property that has a grade differential of more than three feet. And these are elevations of the Ralphs canopies and a side elevation of the car wash tunnel, the highest point being 30 feet. The final portion of the request is an addendum to the specific plan's environmental impact report, which was prepared to analyze the potential environmental impacts of the proposed Right here, before is a site plan of the proposed project. Access to the site will be taken either from Golden West with a new driveway and then, or from Garfield Avenue. The site has a 15-foot landscape buffer along the street frontages, along with landscaping within the interior side, interior setbacks of the site. The fuel center is oriented towards the northwest corner of the site. So here are the fuel canopies, there's two canopies, one right here is, which is the largest one, a smaller canopy here, parking, and then again, the landscape buffer that surrounds the entire site along the street frontages. The car wash and vacuums are oriented along the south and easterly sides of the property. Here we have the car wash tunnel and the vacuum stalls, along with some additional parking. Here is a colored site plan that might be a little bit easier to see. Right here, we have again our new driveway, driveway entrance from Garfield. Fuel center, it's actually comprised of two, this is just a general, kind of showing the general location of the fuel center, but you'll see that the entrance to the car wash, you would come in through here, there's two lanes that eventually merge to one to enter the car wash tunnel. The most of the building will be kind of hidden along this side property line, and as you exit, you can either park or use one of the vacuum stalls that are located right here, and then you can exit the site. The project, here's a, has a, this is a color rendering that kind of provides like a viewpoint from Golden West Street. Here, once again, we see our landscape buffer, buffer, some concrete pavers that as you enter the site, this is just one of the smaller portions of the drive-through lane that as you enter the tunnel of the car wash. The buildings itself provide some visual interest through a variety of design elements, different colors and materials. The scale, the overall scale and design and layout of the site complement the surrounding area as well as the grade difference on the site. This project was presented and reviewed by the Design Review Board and recommended with approval to the Planning Commission with some minor modifications related to colors, materials, and landscaping. Those conditions can be found in Attachment 9 of your packet. So in analyzing the project, it was determined that the general plan amendment would extend the existing commercial neighborhood designation and the zoning text amendment to implement the land use designation proposed, would extend, excuse me, the land use designation to kind of match what's already there. So across Golden West, we already have a CN or commercial neighborhood land use designation. The zoning text amendment to implement the land use designation proposed as part of that general plan amendment will enable the redevelopment of a vacant and industrial site into a more compatible commercial corner with a service station and drive-through car wash. The map to consolidate eight lots into the 1.32 net acre site complies with minimum lot size and width and will elevate the economic viability of the property and improve the streetscape of a major intersection. Approval of the zoning text amendment will ensure that the project is consistent with the development standards for commercial uses as outlined in the specific plan, as well as the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance. And finally, the proposed structures are consistent with the natural grade, and the proposed heights do not result in impacts to the surrounding area, and therefore, the project as proposed will be consistent with the overall goals and needs of the community, provides goods and services to them, to meet regional and local needs, and develop a vacant site in a manner that's compatible with the surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the development portion of the project based on the following: that Addendum Number Two, or the addendum to the environmental impact report of the specific plan, was prepared in compliance with SEQA guidelines, that it's, the project is consistent with the general plan and its goals and policies, as well as consistent with surrounding area, the project meets the requirements of the Subdivision Map Act, and that it'll improve an existing vacant site with the commercial development that's consistent with other uses in the vicinity, and the development of a commercial use on the property would result in less impacts to nearby residences than an industrial use should the property remain as is. The recommendations for the City Council is that the, you know, staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of environmental assessment number 21 dash 001, also known as Addendum Number Two, as adequate and complete in accordance with SEQA, and forward it to City Council for adoption. Recommend approval of the general plan amendment for their consideration, and approval of the zoning text amendment for their consideration, as well as the final tentative parcel map and CUP with suggested findings and conditions of approval. Staff has only received one comment from the public, which we received late this afternoon and has been included as late communication regarding signage on the site to the south of, the southern property of this site. Staff will be working with the property owner to give them guidance as to how they can adjust their sign should the code allow it, to kind of help modify it should they, you know, if they want to make their site, their signage a little bit bigger. So we'll work with them and give them guidance as to how to process that permit. This concludes staff's presentations. Staff is present, along with the applicant, for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, this is a point where we, Commissioners are going to ask questions of the staff, but I would like to make a clarification before we do, because I saw everybody looking at the building. And I want you to know that I think our Design Review Board or Committee does a great job. I think they are responsible for putting together, you know, really good-looking buildings. I think they're, they're very strong in, in making sure that we have architecturally pleasing buildings. And the one you just saw on that rendering was certainly not that, and it was, it, it really, it was recommend, we recommended to go forward to the Planning Commission because there were no fatal flaws with the site plan, and I believe that's what we're here to talk about. The staff added a condition that prior to building permits, in order to keep the project moving along, that we, they have to go back to the Design Review Committee for, to enhance and improve the elevations of the building. We like the way the structure's designed, we asked them to come back and get rid of the stucco, use, use, you know, really nice brick fascia, and then have the fuel station match that as well. And the applicant agreed to, to make those changes, and so, so we didn't, we didn't, as a Design Review Committee, we didn't approve the project, we just recommended it move forward with the conditions that we added to the conditions of approval that they have to go through the Design Review Committee, you know, before they get permits, and we will make sure that that bright color is taken away, that we, that we make it match more of what we're seeing being built in Huntington Beach, which I think is really good-looking buildings, and I think as a city, we should be very proud of what we're, we're building, and this will definitely be something we'll be proud of. And so I'd like to, Commissioners, do we have any questions? And I'd like to start tonight on my left.
Thank you, Chair. No, I, I went and looked at the actual site and the, on your, what you're just mentioning with the, the colors and the way, the center right, the commercial center right across the way is gorgeous, and the homes right on that kitty corner, you know, kind of, it all kind of blends in, so hopefully you'll be able to get the, the design to kind of, because that's beautiful on the other side, so anyway, so. I, the only question, I saw that, I saw that that late communication that came in, and obviously, I think that's for another day, after they meet with the city and figure out what they can and can't do, but it did seem like, when I'm looking at the setback, you have 15 feet just as a border, and then it looks like there's even further setback of that car wash entrance. How many feet would you say from, from the sidewalk to the actual entrance where that tall 30-foot high building is? Could you tell me approximately?
I would say it's about, um, more than 70 feet?
Okay.
Like to the actual tunnel entrance.
Right, I got you. The reason why I ask that is because I'm thinking about the signage, just to, again, not necessarily about the project, but it seems as though that the signage may not be as impacted as they're concerned about, knowing that it's that far back. But anyway, no, the, the project looks, looks great. Anytime you can take an industrial zoning down to commercial is a, is a great step forward, so anyways, that, that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Palmer.
Okay. I actually had two comments, and one was about the colors, so otherwise, I think the project looks great. My other, and I think I've answered my own question, but I want to confirm, when I looked at the site plan and when I looked at the renderings, it looked like there was a really generous amount of parking space, and my concern was, as much as we love to have some available parking, in some areas where there is available parking on private commercial businesses, we've had problems with basically car dwellers there. But when I looked again, and if you can confirm for me, it looks like the generous parking is only in the corridor that you navigate after the car wash. That's what, that's what it looks like to me, but I couldn't confirm that.
That's correct. Yes, most of the parking is to service the car wash and the employees. There will be the, while the car wash has limited hours, there will be people there until about 10:00 PM that can hopefully help avoid having anybody use the, those parking spaces, and we can, you know, we, we do have the applicants here, and they can probably provide a little bit more information as to how they can, you know, mitigate that.
Yeah, it looks like you'd have to go through the car wash to get to those spaces.
It's not easily accessible and visible, so hopefully that'll deter.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Babino.
So just to be clear, the parking that we're talking about would be, I guess that would be the eastern portion of the lot, right, so parallel with Golden West? Okay, but that's kind of the far end, so not on the street. Can you put that picture back up? Yeah.
Right here, it's a little shaded, this might give you a better view.
Okay, perfect.
So it's opposite, complete opposite of Golden West. So it's not necessarily easily accessible or visible from like the street.
And then in the, the color photo, I think it was maybe one?
At the rendering?
No, the, yeah, that one, so, that one. So the parking that we see on the far right, that's for the existing business next door, the Bixby?
That's correct, that's on a separate property.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Nothing further, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Bush.
I had a couple of questions. Can we, in regards to the parking, can we put a condition to place toe-away signage for after-hours? No parking? Could we set that as a condition so that if we run into that issue, we, we've already mitigated it here? That's one question. And the other one was more in regards to, just out of curiosity, reading into the weeds in this, how they're going to deal with the contamination. I know it's not up for our approval, I'm just curious, are they removing the soil or are they remediating it some other way?
I, I can handle that. Jake Worthy with the Fire Department. So back in 2020, actually originally in 2019, they underwent rigorous soil testing for our city standard, and in about 2022, that is when they met and demonstrated compliance with our city spec. So they did not have to physically remove any soil, but they went through rigorous testing, sampling, and investigation on that, so it's already complied with our city spec.
And you don't anticipate any further disturbance to that when they start grading?
So we do have language in there that says, at any time during that process, if further contamination is identified, they have to come to us for next steps.
Thank you. Commissioner Pellman.
I have no questions. It was a very thorough presentation, thank you. Oh, wait, I do have one question, just one. With regards to the DRB, does that mean that it's going to, I was a little confused, is it going to go back to them?
Correct.
After our meeting? And then does it come back to the Planning Commission?
No, ma'am. So what would happen is prior to them submitting for building plan check?
Right.
They will redesign, re, you know, update some other colors and materials, it'll go before DRB for their final review, and then, then it would go to plan check. Okay. So the overall design site, size of the buildings, none of that would change, just some of the materials and colors would change.
So I'm just curious why that wasn't done before it came to the Planning Commission, so that we could see as complete a project as we could. What was the explanation? What was the explanation for that?
Because the overall design was not changing in terms of height, layout. It was more cosmetic. It was thought that it could still move forward, and it would still maintain that extra review prior to going into building plan check. However, if there's something that you want to add more specific, you know, before this item moves forward, in order to address some of those concerns, we can do that too.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious why it doesn't hit the Planning Commission before it goes to the council. So it sounds like it's going to DRB, Planning Commission, back to DRB, then to the council.
Not necessarily. So it could go to council for approval. However, part of its conditions of approval will require it to still go to DRB prior to submitting for a building plan check for building permits. And so, like, as I mentioned, it's because the changes were pretty minor in an effort to keep it moving, because nothing was changing in terms of the layout, high intensity. It was thought that it could still move forward with those minor changes.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner McGee?
I actually really like this plan. There was one thing I didn't do due diligence on, was probably many things I didn't do due diligence on, but one particularly was the well abandonment plan. Has that been independently, independently verified by the city, or we're relying on the applicant's consultants?
So, hi again. So our city spec for well abandonment has options, and essentially the way they've configured the layout of their structures, they don't need to touch or re-abandon their wells because of setbacks. So on a couple of the, like, plans that Joanna had up on the screen, there's actually like a rig footprint diagram that's put on there, and that's just to show that we have future access if there is issues with that well in the future, or if the state came in and said, hey, there's an issue, we got to get a rig out there and fix it. We don't have to demo structures to get to it. So they've designed this site to meet our option of what we call unobstructed access. So.
Wow. I, that's great. That's a great idea. We actually can get approved in LA County for leave the well unabandoned, and you just make it clear of the building, and nobody ever thinks about the rigging that they would have to erect and, and the, and the anchor pads they would need to actually pull the well. That's very, very clever requirement. Thank you. There's no further questions, then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have three who signed up to speak. Please come down to the microphones and line up behind each one of them. We have Vance Shannon, Eric Fitzer, and Kernet Pickens.
Hi, Eric Fitzer, 5240 North 16th Street, Phoenix, Arizona. So I represent Sustainable Engineering Group. We're the engineers and handling a lot of the entitlement on this project. I just want to thank the Chair and the Commission for hearing this. I think staff did a great job presenting the overall project. Happy to, if there's any other further questions and so forth, I think the Commission had some great questions that staff was able to answer. But overall, we're really excited about moving this project forward and developing the site. With that, you know, that, that contains my, my comments at this point. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I got a comment.
Yeah?
I'd like to make a comment on the project. Considering what it looks like, it's, it's beautiful. It's very well, well-done. City of Huntington Beach is only going to be at an advantage having that project there. It's really, really well-done. I just wanted to thank you.
And, and thank you to the Commission and staff. We're very closely, and we are looking forward to bring back the elevations. Again, I'm more on the Ralph's side of the development, so we will definitely be coordinating. And me and, me and the next speaker have been talking about how we can make sure those elevations correspond with each other. Thank you very much.
I have a comment, question. I too really, really like this project, so thank you. But I did want you to speak, and you said Ralph's, but could you give us a sentence or two about the tenant on this?
So, so I represent more or less Ralph's, and then Quick Quack is represented by Vance, who is speaking next. But overall, you know, Ralph's is very excited to do this project, you know, we're across the street, and we're looking at bringing in this fuel center to help bolster the, the project there as well.
Thank you.
All right. We got another question?
Just, just a quick question. I, I did a little research on the Ralph's gas stations. How many are there in Southern California, do you know? I'm sorry.
So I apologize. I couldn't tell you off, offhand. So my, my company handles Ralph's. We also handle a lot of the fuel centers in Arizona as well.
Okay.
I could definitely get back to you on that.
No, no, no.
I'm happy to do so.
I understand. Probably not a question that you expected to be asked, so.
No, but I definitely can get that to the staff, and I'm happy, happy to answer that.
I'm sure I could figure it out on my own, so thank you, though.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions for fuel applicant? Okay. A next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Vance Shannon. I represent Quick Quack Car Wash. I have a short three-minute video that I would love for you to see. It really describes who we are and how we operate.
Since 2004, Quick Quack Car Wash has been one of the largest and fastest-growing car wash platforms in the United States. Quick Quack is a founder-led, 100% express exterior car wash model, disrupting the car wash industry with a vision to be fast, clean, and loved everywhere. Quick service. Our team members are not only friendly, but skilled at getting customers through quickly with average transaction times under 30 seconds. From checking the customer in, evaluating their need for a membership, and completing the membership enrollment or transaction, we are fast. Fast lanes. With each location designed for both high quality and high volume, the lines move quickly. Three-minute wash. When a customer enters our showroom, the car will be cleaned, shined, and dried in under three minutes. Clean! When your car shines on the outside, we smile on the inside. Clean car guarantee. If you're not 100% satisfied, we'll re-wash your car on the spot. Inside and out. Free vacuums at most locations, and dash wipes help give luster to your cars inside too. Tidy team members and locations. Not only are our locations a source of pride, ensuring a bright, clean, and comfortable environment, our team members present themselves in a clean and tidy way. Each customer is greeted with a smile, clean white shirt and tie, allowing everyone to feel welcomed. Clean and green. We take pride in being environmentally friendly by conserving and recycling the water we use to wash your car. Loved. You love your car. We love helping you look good and making our communities better. Customer love. Everyone loves our adorable mascot, Quackles. Our customers also love our unlimited car wash memberships and free vacuums. Team member love. We invest in the dreams of our team members and teach them life and leadership skills to help them learn and grow, surrounded by a strong culture of smart, kind, and driven people and values. Community love. We partner with schools, community groups, and charitable organizations with creative sponsorships and fundraisers, including more than 330 special fundraisers over the past five years. Everywhere, Quick Quack is conveniently located with multiple locations serving our communities, adding even more value to our unlimited car wash memberships, and growing quickly with dedicated real estate development and construction teams comprised of internal and external experts and processes, allowing us to move faster than the competition. Quick Quack has vertically integrated into proprietary software solutions and digital offerings like license plate recognition, as well as state-of-the-art car wash equipment manufacturing and R&amp;D. We could not be more excited about our future and remain committed to our mission of changing lives for the better and ensuring our customers don't drive dirty.
Thank you for letting me play that. There's a couple of things I wanted to address, and then I will answer any questions that you might have. As far as the parking that you mentioned and putting signs up that would prevent people from parking there or being towed away if they were, we're happy to accept that condition if that's something we can do. And then with regard to the design, we are very proud of our brand. We have 310 stores now, I think. It grows every day, it seems. We're working very hard and are close to coming up with a new design that is more congruent and fits in more with your city. So that, that will be done shortly, and we'll have that back to the Design Committee.
Yeah, go ahead.
How many, how many people approximately will you employ in this car wash?
Typically, we have about 18, 15 to 18 people employed at any one of our stores. Usually, there's two to three on staff at any one time, sometimes four, depending on how busy the store is.
Good job.
Any other questions?
Is the mascot there all the time?
Not all the time. Sometimes they're at the Kings Games in Sacramento, but the mascot's a big, we, we are kind of a whimsical fund. It's, you know, I think kids bring their parents to the car wash more than the parents go just for themselves. I know I did with my daughter for many years. But we will come up with a design that's more sophisticated and it fits better with the, with the community and Huntington Beach.
Yeah, regardless, it's more, it's more aesthetically pleasing than what's there right now, so good job.
It's going to be a great project. And the reason I say that is because usually a fuel station's associated with a less-quality car wash. They really don't do a good job. We focus solely on washing cars. We're the fourth-largest car wash in the nation. And so when you couple that together with the gas station, I think it really provides a really good service for folks.
Commissioner Goldwood?
Yeah, I just was going to make a comment that after seeing the duck, I now understand why the ugly colors were involved in the original design. But if you're going to go ahead and redesign, I'll just throw it out there, you know, maybe have the duck carry a surfboard might be more appropriate for Huntington Beach. It's just a suggestion.
Very good.
Are we making that a condition?
Yes. I would like one more comment, and I appreciate the comments that you made, Commissioner Bush and, and Mr. McGee. We really do appreciate that. We really do love our brand. You talked about employment. Our Chief Development Officer for the company started working in a store. He was the manager of a store, and now he's the Chief Development Officer. So we definitely promote within. It's a great company to work for. They really take care of their people.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Last call for Kernet Pickens.
All right. No more speakers? Oh, yes, we do. Go ahead.
Additional one or two minutes, please. Salutations CPC Minnetappale, Kernet Pickens, Northwest Huntington Beach, California. On an administrative note regarding this meeting, I am requesting that doors and windows be opened for plentiful oxygen into this meeting structure. It is difficult to breathe and stuffy in this, in this building. Therefore, there is not enough oxygen in this meeting building, and I denounce this. I am in opposition and request a denial of Item 25, Golden West and Garfield. I reject building on dirt lots. In addition, the city has made it clear that they don't want single-story development. It is a waste of space, and this project is a significant environmental impact. This project is a part of the plan of the destruction of the wetlands and agricultural reclamation. The site company is known to have a wasteful racist club card, racially supremacist employees, food poisoning, dangerous and fraudulent products, a dangerous scanning system, and a year-long food, year-long food shortages. I am requesting that the number of lights be reduced on this project. The amount of light pollution on this project is nonsense. I denounce all of this. One can see too much, that there is too much lighting on this, on these structures. I request this to stop. This is a corrupt project. In conclusion, I request that light shields be placed over the parking lot lights to prevent the light from disintegrating the night celestial object atmosphere. And I request a denial. I thank the CPC for any consideration. Jabeo C. Ado.
Thank you.
We have no further speakers.
Okay, with no other speakers, we will now deliberate that item. Okay, we'll start again on my left tonight.
I appreciate, yeah, well, yeah, it sounds like they're willing to put the signs up for the no parking towing. That's the only thing I think we, that's the only thing I need to see added. Everything else looks great. I appreciate that. It's going to go back to design. I'm sure the colors will be great when it's all said and done. Let's let them move the project forward. So whenever you, the rest of the commission's ready, we'll just call the question. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Palmer?
Regarding the recent comments, I think that the EIR and the CEQA will cover any concerns we have about the environment. Everything else on the project looks good. Good luck on the Design Board re-review.
Yep. Bevino?
I think it's going to significantly enhance that corner, in my opinion. You know, I, I like the project, and I don't really have any concerns at all with it, so.
Commissioner Bush?
Yeah, the only thing in regards to the lighting issue that the gentleman talked about, those are dealt with through the zoning anyhow, so those issues will be mitigated, even if the celestial gods see it.
All right. Commissioner Pellman?
I like the project. I think it's going to enhance that area of Huntington Beach, and it's, it's very well-designed, and thank you. Thank you very much.
Commissioner McGee?
I love the project. I don't care if it's stucco or if there's stone cladding on it. I think it's, I think it's far better than it is right now. And I just like it. I like the fact that we're invested in fossil fuels also, and good job.
Yeah, I, I am proud of the Design Review Committee. They are actually doing a good job in this city. I, I, I see branded-type buildings in the city all the time, and they do look better here. I think we're doing a great job elevating the, you know, the appearance. Commissioner Pellman, we, I am here, one of my goals is to try to help move things along to help improve businesses in Huntington Beach, and I felt that I could trust the Design Review Committee to, in fact, they gave the applicant an example of a recently constructed structure that they would like to, them to emulate. So I believe at the end of the day, before construction, we will, you know, we will have a really good-looking building that, that'll fit what we're trying to do here in the city. Okay, are there any more comments? Do we have a motion?
Do we have four motions or one motion?
I would like to make one motion.
Do we need to make four separate ones or just one?
No, it can be one motion.
Yeah, we'll make one motion to approve all.
One item.
Yeah, one item, so.
All right, I'll second then.
The motion.
With the modification, is that right?
With the modification of the signage.
For the parking.
The parking, the tow, can be towed if they're overnight and what have you.
Second.
May we please have a vote?
Motion carries.
Wow, a clean sweep. Haven't had one of those in a while.
The Planning Commission's action, the Planning Commission's action on the General Plan Amendment, Zoning Tax Amendment, and Environmental Assessment is a recommendation and will be submitted to the City Council for final action. The Planning Commission's action on the tentative parcel map and conditional use permit is final unless an appeal is filed to the City Council within 10 calendar days. final unless an appeal is filed to the City Council within 10 calendar days. An appeal must include the reasons for the appeal, and the fee shall be filed with the City Clerk's Office within 10 days.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent calendar, we have to approve some minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Yes, motion approved as submitted.
Okay.
Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Are we motioning for both minutes, both sets?
Well, if we can.
Yeah, if we can.
Actually, I wasn't present, I was adding to the world's largest second- and third-place trophy cabinet, so...
So, yeah, if one of you wasn't present, then I vote on them separate.
Okay, okay.
We better do the August motion first.
I'm sorry, it was Goldberg, and who seconded?
No, Goldberg made the motion, and we had Bush second.
Thank you.
So, the first is for the August minutes, right?
Yes, August 5th.
Yeah, and I can vote on that one.
Okay.
So long ago, I can't remember if I was here or not. Getting old.
And then, we need a motion and a second for the October...
We need Commissioner Bobinow to vote, and then we can... Okay, we have six ayes, and Commissioner Pellman voting no? Okay. Motion carries.
Okay, now we need a motion for the October minutes and a second.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a vote, please. Here we go.
We have six ayes, Chair Athanas abstaining, motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda is planning items, can we have, staff, can we please have a report?
Yes, so, we will be sending a, a notice of cancellation for the November 25th Planning Commission meeting, that's next week, and then, we currently have one item tentatively scheduled for the December 9th Planning Commission meeting, and it's an appeal of a three-story home in the harbor.
Well, I'm going to comment on that. Okay, before we close for the evening, Planning Commissioners-
I'm sorry, just, I don't know if the right time to say it, but I, I will not be at that meeting on the 9th, and I don't know if that matters, but I'm mentioning it.
Okay. Okay, before we close for the evening, Planning Commissioners, do you have any comments to provide? Start again on my left. Any, any comments? This is our open call, open mic.
Yeah, I'll be in Hawaii during the meeting, so I won't feel badly that I'm missing, but I'll be in Hawaii.
Yeah, but this is for any statements-
I know, no, I appreciate. Oh, I did, I will say, one, one quick statement, because it's been a while, but I did attend that, the concert, the 80s flashback concert at our, at our sports center, and I gotta tell you, it was, it was a blast, I mean, it was cool. I mean, it was, I mean, of course, from my era of music, so it was, I knew every word, every song, but it was a-
Our era of music.
Our era, our era of music, that's right.
Not all about you, Ben.
Well, no, some of you guys are a little older than I am, but that's right, I guess you could fall in that category.
Whoa, easy.
No, it's, no, anyways. And I'm, I'm, it's good to see live music in, in Huntington Beach, so, anyway.
Commissioner Palmer?
Well, I'm looking forward to the drone. No, I have no other comments.
Commissioner Babino?
None for me.
Commissioner Bush?
Just like to wish everybody a great Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Pellman?
Wish everybody a great Thanksgiving?
I second it.
Commissioner McGee?
No, I'm good.
Okay, the only thing I had to add was, there, we, we had two homes in Huntington Harbor in our August meeting that got appealed up to City Council, I believe that this group was, for the most part, well, the majority of us were in favor of, you know, developed by rights, and, and what I saw was a, kind of a design flaw in the, in the, in the rules on how you can build a house. One of the homes had a three-story, but they used a flat roof for three stories, and I feel like that's something that we need to change, I'm trying to work with staff to, to, to present a change. The, the home that's gonna come up on appeal was, they were told to shrink the house down to 30 feet, when, if you have a five-and-12 pitch, that just means you're gonna have a steep roof, and I, I think that's the way the home should be built, with a nice, nice-
So, is that a Mansard-style roof that you're talking about?
You guys, I just wanna stop us before we get too far, it wasn't a Genai, so, we can, Chair, you're free to say your plan is in, as a comment, but I want to avoid getting too deep in discussion about this non-Gennai item.
So, that's, that, you're right, so, I'm just, I think we should consider maybe, I don't know, as a, as a group, consider having our own, yeah, adopting a, a new standard that it would prevent this straight-up box, is I think what was the problem, so, anyway, that's all I have.
Well, if we're gonna do that, I'd like to maybe discuss, and I don't know if we're allowed to do this, but I would like to include in that discussion the, the mass and footprint on third-story rooftop patios, I think that's a, that was a zoning kind of slip-up, so...
Right. Yeah, okay, so I, yeah, I wanna do-
We're making our attorney nervous.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Okay, so, that's the, that's our last item on the agenda, we hereby adjourn to our next Planning Commission meeting, which will, yes, which will be Tuesday, December 9th. Thank you.